Okay, next item of business is the approval of the board minutes. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm supposed to say aye.
Madam President, just one suggestion. Don't forget to take a moment for comments or questions.
Discussion, right? Yeah, thank you. Keep me on line. Okay, the next item on our agenda is general public comment. And do we have folks signed up for general public comment?
Two. First up is Teresa Del Rossi.
Public comment will be three minutes per person. Put your name and area of residence, please.
Hi, my name is Teresa Del Rossi and I'm from Milford Township. I come here tonight because I'd like to comment on, tonight on the agenda is a new 115 AR, which is, I'm sure you know about the Technical Education Administrative Regulations that they're setting for tonight. Specifically, I want to talk about step two. It states in there that the registrar will confirm the grade level for the purpose of enrollment in a public school program with the district homeschool coordinator. I take issue to this fact because currently, the homeschool coordinator guesses the grades of homeschoolers in this district. You probably are looking at me like, guesses? Yes, that's quite what she does. She looks at the age, which is listed on an affidavit that the homeschool supervisor must file by August 1st, and assigns a grade. So, for instance, if a student is 13 on August 1st but turns 14 on August 2nd, the student is arbitrarily assigned to grade seven. Even though the homeschool child is academically in a different grade. Could be eighth grade, could be ninth grade. This is irresponsible of the administration because it will prevent homeschoolers from attending the tech school even though they meet the grade level requirements. Another example, a 14-year-old student as of August 1st and is learning at a seventh grade level in a homeschool program would be able to attend the tech program because homeschool, because the homeschool coordinator arbitrarily recorded this student as ninth grade. In the first example, homeschool students who excel academically are penalized and held back. Whereas in the second example, students are placed erroneously in elevated studies and this, I think we all agree, could set them up for failure. I am recommending that the proposed 115 AR be revised so the homeschool supervisor will be given ample opportunity to provide evidence of the appropriate grade placement at the time of enrollment at the tech school. And that the decision of grade level is not arbitrarily assigned as it currently is by the school administrator who has never met or even evaluated the student. Thank you for your time.
Oops, thank you, Mrs. Del Rossi.
George Del Rossi?
My name is George Del Rossi from Milford Township. Some of yous are new, so I'm just going to give you a little background. The administration was denying homeschool students from attending the tech school even though district policy allowed them, plainly allowed them to attend. Until finally, the board had to vote to follow their own policy to allow homeschool students to attend. My daughter then attended eight weeks of tech school. Perfect attendance, 98 average, all kinds of accolades from her teacher. And out of the blue, after eight weeks, she was pulled from the school because someone in the district arbitrarily placed her in seventh grade. Never spoke, never spoke to my daughter, never evaluated her, never did anything. They just arbitrarily said, oh, by this date of August 1st, which, her age? Oh yeah, she's in seventh grade. We've been looking for explanation since. We've gotten no response from the board, no response from the superintendent. As of today, no response from any of your lawyers. Okay? Everybody can't speak to me, I understand, advice of counsel. But your lawyers, your law firm, has yet to contact me, any of my counsel, anybody. Zero contact. That's where we stand now. This is nothing more than more bullying by the administration. As in all bullying, it only stops when someone stands up to stop it. If you don't stand up, you're part of the problem. If you don't stand up, you're fouling this child. An innocent child who wants to learn, who wants to achieve, and wants to excel. This is the very type of child that you should want in your education system. You need to stand up and stop the bullying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rossi. And I realize that due to, you know, reasons that, from counsel, we should not be discussing. But I did just have one point of clarification, and normally wouldn't do this during public comment, but since this has been an ongoing thing. From my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we send a notice about what grade that the student is in. If you could just explain that maybe a little bit better so people could understand, and maybe even for him to understand-
Are you talking to me?
-the process. I'm just talking to our administration as far as-
Oh.
-you mentioned the arbitrarily assigning, and that's not my understanding of how that works.
Okay. Well, it's my understanding, and no one's explained anything different. So, if someone wants to-
I think, I think we should call this discussion at the advice of our attorney was not to talk about it. Or that necessarily benefits us to have that discussion.
I mean, I understand that. I don't know if there's something that you could do to put a fire under, like, have a lawyer call me. Someone discuss something with me.
Right on my prerogative at this point, I've not been involved in this, so it's one else.
I didn't want to discuss this particularly, I just wanted to discuss the process of what happens with the grades for homeschoolers. It's not arbitrarily set. I'll say one last thing, and you guys can feel free to correct me. But from what I understand, every single year, we send out a notice to where we believe the student is and what grade that they're in. So, I'm not-
My understanding is they're assessed, and once they're assessed, the assessment's sent to the school district.
Right.
Am I, am I correct on that? And that's what I mean, I'm not here to debate that.
Never an assessment.
Not, not by the school district, by an independent person.
Independent person, yes, which we have.
Is there any way that I could just, and I understand, I'm not trying to discuss this particular case, I just want to understand the process for us with-
Okay, so by law, we have to fill out, submit an affidavit by August 1st. It has to have the child's name and age on there, which I comply. At the end of the year, by June 30th, we have to submit a, we have to have the child evaluated, and a letter has to be submitted along with, well, I guess the future objectives, I usually include it all, for the following year. An evaluation letter stating that the child has met the requirements, and a homeschool child has to keep advancing. So, the evaluator checks them year to year, and they see that they're advancing. And then, in grades three, third, fifth, and eighth grade, the child has to take a standardized test. The test is not submitted, but the evaluation letter states on there. So, that is submitted.
That they took the test.
That they took the test in either third, fifth, or eighth grade.
Do they have to pass it?
No, not a requirement. However, I can tell you my-
So, we have a homeschool district, excuse me, a school district home-
The child hasn't passed tests, it's where the child is. So, the evaluator can see that child's in eighth grade, and they're performing at a fifth grade level, for instance. Then they're going to question, and probably give some guidance, and that parent, either the child has a learning problem, they need additional assistance, or something's not happening.
Excuse me, not to interrupt, but I just wanted to clarify this one point. The school district homeschool coordinator sends a letter to each family that acknowledges the receipt of a qualified evaluator's report for the prior year, and acknowledges receipt of required paperwork to homeschool for the upcoming year. Does that sound correct?
Well, the first we became aware of that was through emails, and as soon as we saw that, since all of this happened, we immediately said that that grade level was incorrect, and that we had proof, and that the conversation has completely shut down.
Right.
I have proof.
And we sent the proof, we sent the proof, I believe, to the board.
I have her evaluation letters, I have her test scores, that you could see that-
So, what I would just ask, and I just wanted to clarify that one point, I do have a lot of people that are still wanting to give a public comment, and we have presenters here. But I just wanted to mention that point as clarification, and, you know-
We're asking for, we've contacted the administration to sit down, and we can show this proof, and we've been acknowledged.
We really, I understand, and you've described that to us. And the reason I was mentioning it now is because I noticed that you guys are voicing this, you know, for each board meeting, and trying to get to some solution there.
My daughter is devastated. This is, this has affected her.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Every month, until we get her back.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Hamir, Hamir Rodriguez?
Name and area of residence.
My name is Hamir Rodriguez, and I am from the Quagertown borough, and I reside at 21 Allen Lane. Thank you, board members, for having me today. I would like to begin by asking everyone here to close their eyes, and imagine yourself back in high school. You know, you just wrapped up your toughest gym class, you feel overheared, gross, sweaty, and your stomach is growling for food. Then you rush over to the cafeteria, assemble your tray, only to find after punching your PIN number, that you can't get a full meal. Imagine that feeling. Wouldn't that make the pain in your stomach feel a little worse? That kid was me. I was that kid who could not afford lunch. My mom, a single mother of two, was a dollar over the subsidies that she didn't qualify for, and it was already a struggle for money. A struggle to put lunch money together every day. How many of you have had or know someone that's experienced not being able to pay for lunch? I want to show of hands. Yourself, you know, you had to ask a friend for money, it's rough. And how many of you have asked peers and teachers for money? Pretty sure all of us have done that. I was also that kid who didn't go up if I didn't have money to save further embarrassment from when I couldn't find anyone to help me. No child should have to choose between starvation or shame. No parent should hear their child tell them that they have been denied lunch. Imagine the stress, the anxiety, and the tension that puts a family on edge. Wages have been stagnant for over 40 years, and for a family of four in Quagertown, averaging 60 to 70 K a year, is unsustainable in this day and age, already having to pay for high healthcare premiums, increasing rent, and rising costs to send a child to school. Especially when families are struggling, it is immoral to deny food, a basic human right, to a child that is, which is essential to their growth and development. To deny them food, to take away their graduation away, and to send their debt to collectibles, to collectors, is barbaric and shameful. If I were you all, I wouldn't be able to look at these kids or students in their faces, or even show myself around the district. And to those that voted for this policy, I leave you with simple advice. Don't run for reelection, because your opponents will send mailers and post flyers with your names in bold with the text, "They want your kids to starve," over your faces. Do better. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I respond to that in one point? I don't want to address Mr. Rodriguez specifically. I don't know your situation, I can't imagine what you went through. But I do want to address the comment that we're not providing lunch to kids. Because the district's policy is feed every child, there is nobody in this district who goes without a lunch, whether they can pay for it or not. I don't know when you were in school. Okay, I'm just saying, the lunch shaming bill came in in 2017, so that practice that might have happened back when you were in school was made illegal several years ago. So, this district hasn't denied food to any child for several years. So, that's no longer happening. I just want to make sure you're clear on that. Okay? Because when people say that this district is not feeding children, that concerns me because it's not true. As far as some of the other concerns you have with the policy, a lot of people share them, we could talk about that, and that can be a discussion for a future date. But please, for everybody out there who would believe, or has heard, or even thinks that there's a child in this district who goes hungry, that's not true. And we're not giving them an alternate lunch. They get the standard lunch that's on the menu for every day. So, that, I just want to make sure you're clear on that.
I would just like to make one other comment, that you probably don't come here frequently. But there was a common Mrs. Kondraki, who would come a few times a year. And if you could close your eyes, put yourself on a fixed income, far below the levels you just quoted. Constantly getting your limited budget chewed into by rising taxes, having to choose to get medicine for your ailing husband, who eventually then died, or thinking about, do I have to move because I can't afford to live? So, we have both types of tough situations to deal with. You know, like, the money, $27,000, soon to be $40,000, you know, might not seem like much to a $100 million budget. But we have to fight for both ends of the spectrum, and, you know, certainly, if you read the policy, and if you, we're at the meeting where we held, held a public meeting about it, we have extreme prejudice of compassion. And, you know, we're definitely not trying to hurt kids. But we also have a crazy spike in, you know, we want to help the people you're talking about, we want to help them. But certainly, if you look at the actual data, which every once in a while, that chart flashes up, I don't know if anyone wants to figure out why that chart flashes up once in a while, and could put it back up. But that one, so see that the line that starts and goes flat at the bottom there, and it goes up like a rocket? That's our lunch debt. So, you could see the three years prior to that lunch shaming bill, yeah, we had a roughly $1,671 per year average. Miraculously, it, you know, increased by this insane amount, which certainly couldn't, so, there's either, you know, one hypothesis is, we uncovered more needs such as you're describing, and we need to find that. Or, a little bit of that and a lot of scamming. I don't know. Like, I don't know how the message got out that people could suddenly stop paying their debt. But it's a stark contrast. So, in the face of decreasing demand, because actually our free and reduced lunch went up in terms of, right, so there's actually less people, less percentage of people needing to pay, yet the actual, the debt skyrocketed. And in Bethlehem School District, imagine that, now, we're chump change, you know, Bethlehem School District is a quarter of a million, right? So, something weird has happened, and we definitely side with you in being compassionate. So, I don't feel shameful for the policy that we've put in there. I think we, like, the school district, the administrators, the teachers, they're here to help kids, they're, we're not here to hurt kids. And, you know, that's not our, that's not, their passion in life is helping kids. So, you know, I think you need to respect them a little bit of what they're trying to do. And we're certainly not here trying to be an ogre. But at the same time, the Mrs. Kondraki of the world, I also, we help an elderly neighbor, 35 some odd percent of her fixed income goes to school taxes. That's huge, right? And they haven't, these people haven't had kids in the school district for 40, 50 years. So, you know, I feel for them as well. So, the compassion kind of goes both ways. It's a rough spot to be in, to shepherd the resources of this community and help both ends of the spectrum that are hurting. But thanks for your courage to come up and tell us a heartfelt story. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a tough topic, and, you know, we're going to move on to the next public comment. But for the record, I just want everyone to know, we're also trying to find ways to solve the problem, rather than just put measures in place, punitive measures in place. So, one thing that Mr. Kern is not mentioning is that he is on board for us to try and dig in a little bit deeper to uncover what the systemic problem is. Because I don't believe that this is, we can't assume anything about these families. And I think we need to try to do our best effort to tell families that come to us, talk to us, let us see how we can help you. Okay, we don't have anyone else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else that did not sign up but would like to make a public comment? Next item on the agenda is the superintendent report.
Now I can defer to Mr. McCucci.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you, fellow board members, and I come over here tonight to introduce one of my colleagues and friends from Lehigh Valley Health Network, Dr. Gillian Beecham. I'll take you back to the email that Dr. Hardner sent out about a month and a half ago that spoke about several students in a class that graduated a couple of years ago that had passed away from opioid overdose. And it quickly popped into my mind that this epidemic that we hear about on the news almost every day, and it probably has affected, you know, somebody we know, is affecting the community greatly. And when I read his email, I thought to myself, the work of our physician colleagues in toxicology at Lehigh Valley Health Network addressing opioid addiction is phenomenal. And I'm here tonight to introduce one of our guests, speakers, Dr. Gillian Beecham, who's a medical toxicologist and emergency medicine physician on the front line fighting this epidemic. And my goal, in our discussion, our goal is to really kind of give you, you know, what the caregivers on the front line are dealing with. But I think more importantly, to the board as well as our community, to understand access points for people who are struggling with addiction, and that there's not a lost cause. And her quote is, "End the stigma." And so, making it a public conversation to have, to turn these vulnerable people into a place to go for treatment. So, without further to do, I would like to introduce Dr. Gillian Beecham. She is a medical toxicologist, emergency medicine physician, as well as an assistant director of research and medical toxicology at Lehigh Valley Health Network. She co-chairs the Lehigh Valley Health Network Opioid Storage Ship and linkage to Treatment Committee, and is a physician lead on the network's medications for addiction treatment program. She is a board-certified emergency medicine physician, medical toxicologist, and addiction specialist. Dr. Gillian Beecham. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the chance to speak with you tonight. So, thanks for the invitation, the warm welcome. So, I wanted to give just a little bit of a background on the crisis, and what we're calling a crisis of substance use disorders in our communities, and to talk about some of the approaches that we are taking locally to address the crisis. And my hope is that by the end of the talk, we'll have a little bit of a better understanding about what the issue is, what we can do about it as a community, and also to leave you with a sense of hope that this is a crisis that we can solve, and that there is hope for treatment, access to treatment, and to prevent deaths from this epidemic. Turn us on here. So, the first image I'd like to leave you with is that if you woke up this morning and you read the news, and you heard that we had had a plane crash, and we lost everybody on board, a big jumbo jet liner, I think we would all be very upset by that. And if we woke up the next day, and we read the same thing again, and then the next day, and it happened again, we would really ask ourselves, what are we missing here? What do we need to do to address this issue? And the number of people in the United States who lose their lives is the equivalent every day of a jumbo jet liner falling from the sky and losing everybody on board. And so, I think when we pull all of that data together, we recognize that this is incredibly concerning, and that we need to think as a community about where we should go from here to begin to address this. When we look at the numbers of opioid and other overdose deaths over time, we see that those numbers continue to rise. And I think all of you have probably seen a similar image to this, that we take some time to catch up on our numbers, but when we look at coroner's data from 2017, we're over 70,000 deaths from overdoses in the United States each year. So, we've long surpassed deaths from motor vehicle accidents. And so, this is something that we're watching very carefully. And in particular, if you look at the map of the United States, you'll see that in Pennsylvania, we are a very, very hard-hit area of the country. And so, we're one of four states in our nation who unfortunately have worsening numbers of overdoses rather than improving. And so, we continue to struggle. And when we look across our region and our county, you see that in the darker brown color, that we have a number of counties in our region that are particularly hard-hit. And so, if we look at ourselves as a region, as Eastern Pennsylvania, that we have a lot of issues to address here. And one important thing is that as we read our newspapers, and as we think about this image of losing a jumbo jet liner full of community members every day, that those statistics are just the tip of the iceberg. And so, what's hidden deep beneath that tip of the iceberg are pieces that we need to address in our communities. And that include that for every overdose death, there are several thousand people who are in our communities and who are at risk because of utilization of prescription opioids, and many hundreds of people who are beginning to misuse opioids or other substances who are at risk of further developing a substance use disorder. And so, we need to look very carefully at what is underneath some of those overdose statistics that we talk about all the time. And we know, when we look back over time, all the way through the 2000s, that we have a trajectory, we have a way that we got here, and the way we got here is very, very complicated. And there are a number of factors, and there's no one, one piece of this that we can blame. There was influence from the pharmaceutical industry, there were a number of approaches that we in medicine took in prescribing certain medications like opioids, very heavy prescribing through the late 90s and early 2000s, that led to people to become dependent and then further addicted to opioids, and subsequently led to overdose deaths, many of which through the 2000s were accidental in middle-aged adults and due to prescribed opioids. Since then, there are other factors, including the transition of a number of people to illicit substances. And when we look at the substances that come into our country, they are increasingly deadly in terms of the content. So, I think everyone's probably heard about fentanyl and fentanyl analogs, so substances like fentanyl, incredibly potent opioid, that are now in the street supply of opioids. So, if people turn to purchase pills, illicit pills, or to purchase powders or other substances to use for their effects, what we're seeing are people who are accidentally overdosing because they think they're purchasing a certain type of prescription opioid, and they're actually taking pressed fentanyl that is coming in from various markets. And what we worry about is when we have particularly our younger individuals, our adolescents in our communities, who may for the first time be trying a pill that doesn't sound like a particularly dangerous substance, perhaps it's something that was brought to a party or an event, and that that pill could contain even a tiny amount of fentanyl, which could potentially be a fatal dose. And so, what we continue to see are people of all ages- And so what we continue to see are people of all ages, all demographics, who are being affected by this crisis, and who are coming to our hospitals having overdosed, which is incredibly, incredibly sad. We know that there are a number of factors, like how our health systems address the opioid crisis, address prescribing, and we've now begun to take steps to try to address the crisis. And I want to show you what some of those are. At LVHN, we take a three-pronged approach. We look at preventing new cases of substance use disorders by changing how we prescribe. So we're much more cautious about prescribing substances like opioids. And people now know when they, if you take your child to the dentist for root canal, that opioids are probably not a good idea, and that we are empowering families and parents, and even our kids to say, "I don't need that. I don't need that prescription. I'm going to do fine with non-opioid medications." And that our prescribers know that people won't be upset if they don't get that prescription. And so we've really changed the way that happens. Number two is that we're looking to reduce stigma. So, we are working to make sure that we can have open conversations about substance use conditions, where those begin. And our kids who are in high school are at particularly high risk. That's where a lot of these issues can begin, where some of these patterns of substance misuse and harmful use can develop. And if we can talk about that openly, without stigmatizing addiction as a disease, that we have the possibility to prevent the development of substance use conditions. And then when people have a substance use condition, that we make sure that people can come in to their physician's office, or to hospitals, to emergency departments, and be linked to treatment. Whereas in the past, that was very challenging to do. There was sort of an attitude that we don't do that here, right, in various emergency departments. And that we mean to change, and have implemented processes to do that. So, now when you leave the hospital after a surgery, our goal is that the surgeon who is discharging you or your child from the hospital, that an opioid ween will be prescribed. So if an opioid is an important part of your treatment, if you've had a major surgery, that rather than just a certain number of pills, and rather than just reducing that to a small number of pills, we do better. We say, "This is exactly how you reduce the dose, taking less and less over the course of three or seven days, depending on how invasive that procedure was." So as a person taking an opioid, you know that you should only take it for a few days at most, and that the opioids are not the first thing you would take, that the other medications, non-opioids, so things like Tylenol or Motrin are the medications you would take first before taking that opioid. The second big piece is that we're tracking all of that prescribing, so we can feed information back to our advanced practice clinicians and our physicians, and even our nursing colleagues about what is being prescribed, how many pills, what the dose is, and to make sure that opioid weens are being used. And we're looking at all the people who are discharged, say after a surgery, or an admission, or a visit to the emergency department, how many opioids, if any, are they being prescribed, so that we can provide information back to those prescribers to say, "Look, we're changing how we do this. We want to make sure that everyone's aware of where they stand compared to other prescribers of these types of medications." When we track this over time, what we do is, through our electronic medical record, is that we track data in terms of whether or not we're checking the prescription drug monitoring program, so we can see if somebody is receiving prescriptions from other providers, so that we can see how many opioids are prescribed. An MMED that you see there means morphine milligram equivalents per day. So we can track and say, is the amount of opioid being prescribed under a safe threshold? And what we use are guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control to help us say, "Hey, we need to reduce how much we're prescribing here, make sure we keep people safe." And the most important thing is really educating the individuals and the families at the bedside to say, "Hey, our goal is to really have you off these medications." What we've learned is that if I were to prescribe a prescription to everyone in this room, and it was the first time you'd ever received an opioid prescription, probably five of you in a year from now would have been unable to stop taking that type of medication. So you would be struggling with opioid dependence, and would have had to come back and look for refills or obtain those medications from a different urgent care or a different provider. And so when we look at those numbers, we say that is incredibly concerning. And so we need to be very, very careful about how we prescribe and track that prescribing over time. When we look, say, at our surgeons, what we do is we'll call patients after their surgery and say, "How many pills did you take?" And what we find is that people take fewer than half of the prescribed pills. So we can then feed that information back to the surgeon and say, "Your patient took fewer than half of what you prescribed, so you can comfortably cut down on the number of pills prescribed, and know that you won't be leaving someone in pain, and you won't be leaving someone upset with your care." In fact, you can say, "On average, most people need X amount of pills, and so we're going to be very cautious, prescribe you that many, and try to get you off of the pills as soon as we can." So we're using that information to educate our community members, as well as the people who are prescribing the medications. The other piece is harm reduction, and that is looking at making sure that we have access to naloxone or Narcan, which is the reversal agent for an opioid overdose. We hope that all of our schools will have Narcan available. We, there was a Narcan reversal of a young child today, or yesterday, I think? I can't remember. It was in the past 24 hours in our communities. And so it's important that we have access to naloxone. We have our police officers, our EMS providers carrying naloxone. Many of us carry it in our bags with us every day. We know that if you are prescribed an opioid, or there is an opioid being prescribed to someone in your home, it may be an older adult, it may be someone with a chronic condition, that if your loved ones are living in a home where an opioid is available, that naloxone should be present. We have had cases of very, very young children, toddlers, for example, who've accidentally stepped on a pain patch in the bathtub, say. Those sometimes slip off someone, another person's body. And we've had overdose deaths in very small children because of that. And so we recommend that Narcan be taped to the fridge in any household where there might be an opioid present. Reducing stigma is really important. So, the most important take-home today is that someone who struggles with a substance use condition has a chronic issue, a chronic condition of the brain. And what happens is that substances, whether it's nicotine, whether it's cannabis, opioids, methamphetamine, whatever it might be, hijacks the part of the brain that helps each of us get up every day, take care of our families, hold down our jobs, feed ourselves. So that's the reward center of the brain, where we get a little boost of a chemical called dopamine every time we do something that helps us to survive and live a good life. And unfortunately, all those substances hijack that part of the brain and reward you with a good feeling, and your brain says, "I need to do that again. And I need to do it again right away." And so what happens with substances is that it's very, very hard to stop taking that substance, because the part of the brain that you need to get better, and to make a good decision about not taking a substance, has been hijacked. And so you end up in a vicious cycle of substance use, and a lot of challenges in healing. So what one thing we're doing in our communities and training our providers is to use person-first language. And so that's one thing we can all do after leaving here today, is that if you have a loved one or colleague, or know someone in the community who struggles with a substance use condition, that we would use person-first language. So we would call that individual a person with a substance use disorder or substance use condition, rather than using labels that shame or blame that individual. So, we're trying not to call anybody an addict. Sometimes that term is used in recovery meetings, but outside of those meetings, that we would say, "My son, or daughter, or my colleague is a person with a substance use condition." And that helps us to try to wrap our brains around the fact that this is a chronic disease, and that stigma, really placing shame or blame, prevents people from seeking the care that they need. And that puts people at risk of overdose and losing their lives. So what we're trying to do, then, is change how we have conversations with people at the bedside. So when people come to us for help, what we're doing is, rather than telling people what to do, we are using a process called motivational interviewing. And this is probably the best way anyone can talk to a preteen or an adolescent individual, is what we do is we respect the autonomy of that individual. We are compassionate with that person. And what we do is we try to evoke from that individual what's important to them. So rather than saying, "You need help," or labeling that person, we ask what's important to them, how they envision getting better. And what we do is try to pull out of that individual a motivation to get better, so that they can say, "What's important to me is making sure I don't miss school, or making sure I can get a job, or making sure I can go to college," or whatever it may be. And so that's a technique that our nurses, and our social workers, and our physicians are getting trained in, so that we can have really good conversations, especially with our young individuals in the communities who we feel are at risk and may be beginning to suffer from harmful use or be exposed to individuals in the community with harmful use, so that we can have those conversations, and make sure that, without stigmatizing the issue, that we engage people in really good conversations. At LVHN, we have a, what we call a simulation, where we bring in high school students and college students. And they come into our simulation center, and they see basically a simulated overdose. A young woman who overdoses at home, is found by her mother, receives Narcan, comes in by ambulance, and then is treated in the emergency department, and then in the intensive care unit because of an infectious complication of her substance use. And the students see a conversation with an emergency physician, and a toxicologist, and then an addiction recovery specialist, who has a very motivating conversation with that individual. And when we ask the students questions before and after the simulation, they tell us that they feel, after seeing the simulation, that they have a better understanding of substance use disorders, and they have a sense of hope that people can get better from a substance use disorder. And that, I think, is a really important message that we like to send home with our students. And then we talk to them about health professions, and what they saw, and what all the various roles are in the hospital setting where people can come in to receive treatment. This is in collaboration with Center for Humanistic Change, who provides high school, and middle school, and even elementary school outreach around substance use conditions. And they have a curriculum that's available, that's age-appropriate, that they bring into the schools and various community organizations to provide that education and start some of those conversations at a very young age, so that we have upstream prevention of substance use conditions. This is, again, just showing some of those images of the students gathering around where the room is set up to be a mock emergency department. They see the arrival of the ambulance on video, and then they see the young lady receive treatment and that conversation. This is our addiction recovery specialist. This is Paige Roth. She is in recovery herself, and is able to sit down with individuals in our community and say, "I've been in your shoes." She can say, "I'm in long-term recovery." And she says, she calls herself a dealer of hope, where she says to people, "I've been abstinent from many substances for many years. You can do this too, and I know that there's hope." So what she helps us understand is that in our countries, there are 23 and a half, in our country, there's 23 and a half million people in long-term recovery, and the same number of people who still need to seek treatment. And so we're doing very well, and we have a long way to go. And so what we like to say is, if each of those individuals in long-term recovery reached out a hand and had a conversation with each of the 23 and a half million people who are struggling, what we could do then is provide hope and link people to the care that they need. One thing we are doing is medication to support recovery, and we have medications that are designed to help heal that part of the brain that I talked about, that really become hijacked when substances are used in a harmful way. And those medications stabilize the brain, so that the person can then go on to do individual and group counseling, to engage in some community support, and to heal and get better. So, our overall network approach is that we have Paige Roth, our addiction recovery specialist. Holly Roth is a certified recovery specialist, so she's also a peer supporter. We have a hospital opioid support team, so the county brings in assessors when someone comes to our emergency department and says, "I would like to get help with my substance use issue." We have someone come out from the county to provide that support. And so each county has their own version of this type of assessment and support system. And so the county Drug and Alcohol Authority is a great place to start, to say, "Where can we link our loved ones and our community members to help?" And what then happens is that we have a warm handoff. So, an assessment is done at the bedside, and then we link that individual to outpatient treatment, or to a detoxification center, or to a rehabilitation facility, or any kind of program that might be appropriate for them. We're also trying to get our primary care physicians, so our family docs, and our internal medicine docs out in the community, to begin to do this work. And we call it the hub-and-spoke model, where you can go to your primary care physician and also get help. You don't have to come to a hub, to a hub addiction treatment center. You can begin to get help at your primary care provider's practice. And so we're building that all the way across our network, and all the way across the region. We also have a big obstetrics program. So as you may have heard, so if an infant is born to a mother with a substance use condition, they can suffer from opioid withdrawal or other substance withdrawal. And we have a whole pathway, not only to support those moms, but to support that infant, and to really pool resources together to provide that support, to make sure that mother doesn't feel stigmatized, and to really allow family to come together, and community to come together, to provide that support, so that that child has an excellent chance of going on to live a really wonderful life. Takes a lot of coordination. We have social workers and addiction medicine specialists, case managers, who, again, wrap around those families to provide that support, again, without stigmatizing the individual. What we want is people to feel comfortable coming to us for help, speaking out, asking for help, rather than feeling like they have to hide in the shadows, because they feel shame around their disease process. We monitor the baby in the neonatal ICU, and provide wraparound support for that child all the way through their early pediatric years, to make sure that, again, that that child has a really, really healthy start to life. When we look at addressing substance use conditions in our children and our adolescents, there are a number of resources out there. The Centers for Disease Control have a number of online resources that can be shared with school administrators, with family members, and with our children. So, these are all resources that can be really wonderful places to start from. As I mentioned, Center for Humanistic Change is another organization that helps pool those resources together, and vets them, make sure that they're really appropriate, and brings those resources to schools, again, so we can have those conversations. This is a tough topic. It's a tough topic for families. It's tough because it's hard to acknowledge that substance use conditions are very much present in our communities, that if you gather a room full of people like this, as Keith mentioned, most of the time, there is at least one person who has been directly affected by a substance use condition, or having a loved one with a substance use condition. As I mentioned before, this disease process affects all demographics. There is no one who is free from being affected by this. So, I think it's time for our communities to acknowledge that speaking freely about this, reducing stigma, making sure people know that there is hope, and that we're redefining substance use conditions as a disease process of the brain, that there's a medical diagnosis that can be made there, but that this is a disease process that is 100% treatable, that recovery is probable, not just possible, but probable, if we can have those conversations, if we can start with upstream prevention, and if we can make sure that we, make sure that people know that they have access to resources, and that they can come and access medical care, that we'll be there to support them, that we're not going to stigmatize individuals, and that we're going to do our best to reduce harm, to make people feel supported and loved, and that we will bring them the treatment that they need. With that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thanks for your time.
I just want to say how impressed I am with that presentation. And I am one of those who has been affected, actually multiple loved ones of mine, unfortunately. And how far we've come as far as the medical community, in really trying to address this in a compassionate way. I even, I mean, I just learned a ton by listening. And I'm happy to see that this is something that is taking place, you know, from community standpoint, from even your primary physician. It's excellent. So, thank you so much for shedding some light. I'm hoping that we can continue to make progress in that effort. How can we... How can we help as a school district? What can we do to help further this cause?
That's a really good question. So I think, in my mind, when I, you know, when our high school kids come and visit and see that simulation, they're really bright. They get it, right? They understand. They understand stigma. And I think that we can start educating our youth right from now about stigma, about the disease process. And this, this kind of concept, this understanding, can be applied to many, to behavior health issues, right, to risk of suicide. So there are many, what we're calling deaths of despair, so conditions of despair, that are affecting our youth. And so when we look at the spectrum of those conditions, if we can take a non-stigmatizing approach, and if kids know from an early age that it's okay to seek help, that it's, that we're not going to stigmatize people who are struggling, who are willing to reach out for help, and that we're there, I think that, that using language, changing how we even talk about substance use conditions with our kids will change the next generation. So I think we'll see a turn in the tide of overdose deaths, but our kids in our communities are going to have to be the ones that really push that forward. And so I think, as a, to answer your question, I think it's, it's all about open conversations and education, changing how we think and how we talk. And so even if you don't feel like you have the expertise or the background, just thinking about changing language tomorrow as you talk to community members and colleagues, and even just using person-first language can actually change how we think and feel and may change the conversation such that somebody that you love or care about or someone in the community says, "I'm going to come forward and ask for help." And so it's little, little things that each of us can do in our communities that can really make a difference.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I think, I think you bring up one good point about, and this is important for the community to understand, especially with school-age kids up in the high school where there may be medications laying around the house for a rainy day. And, and so can you sort of give it, you know, any advice around people that store or keep medications laying around and really that experimental stage of high school kids?
That's a great point. So there's a lot of pressure if you are in high school or even middle school, junior high, going to a party to bring something. And it's really easy, in all of our homes, to find something to bring. Most of us are prescribed an opioid at some point in our lives. So there are enough opioids prescribed currently that each American has a prescription. Now, that doesn't mean each of us literally has one, right? Some people may have multiple, but there are enough out there that if an individual looks in a medicine cabinet, if you think about your home or your loved one's home, there are probably medications in there that are unsafe. And so what we recommend is if you are prescribed an opioid and you have extra opioids, that those be returned. Almost every pharmacy, all hospitals, many law enforcement facilities have drug take-back boxes, and those medications should be returned. If they can't be returned, they should be mixed with coffee grounds or kitty litter in a bag and put in the, in the trash. So if everyone here goes home today, or even goes home over the holidays, and just ask your loved ones to say, "What's in your medicine cabinet? Is there anything we can get rid of?" There probably is something there. Because I think all of us have been guilty of, you get a script and you think, "Well, I'll just hang on to it. Maybe I'll twist my ankle while on vacation, and what if I need a prescription?" Right? So we've all done it. And we know that individuals who struggle with substance use conditions know that if you go to an open house, when people put their house on the market, you can go open house to open house to open house any weekend and fill your bag with pills from the medicine cabinet. So people know, teenagers know, everybody knows that all of us have pills in our, in our cabinets. So go home, get rid of them, put them in coffee grounds or kitty litter, or take them to a drug take-back box. And then maybe talk to your loved ones about the possibility of, if you have a loved one in the home, many, many people have other family members, multiple generations in the home. If there's someone with a fentanyl patch or opioid pills that are prescribed, that it's not a bad idea to ask your prescriber for a Narcan prescription. Tape it to the fridge, make sure everybody knows how to use it. It's like an Afrin, a little nasal spray, and it can save your teenager's life or your four-year-old's life, or someone in your home who, like I mentioned, many of our overdoses have been in people who are just taking their prescribed medications and have accidentally overdosed in their sleep typically. So throw out your meds and ask, ask about naloxone.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come out. Very important topic. Next item on the agenda is our standing committee reports. The first one would be for the facilities committee, and that's myself. So, bear with me here. So we did take a look at the, our budget for desk chairs, common areas, furniture, new playground for the Nightig renovation project. And the district typically utilized a certain company for this, and the recommendation is to continue, continue to utilize them. So we looked at a couple of different models of what that equipment will look like. And of course, that's a little bit farther down the road, but it's going to be on the January board agenda, so just a heads up. There's two options regarding the furniture. The first is to identify a supplier and work with them to purchase all the furniture, and the second is to identify list and do a mini RFP to select suppliers. So more to come with that. We have had a lot of teacher involvement, as well as Scott Godshock, the principal of Nightig, has been involved in recommending various models. And, and so, like I said, more to come on that. We are taking a look, as many of you know, trying to find a baseball field for our district has been quite the challenge. So we've been looking at a ton of different options. One that we are taking a look at is, our administration met with the Quakertown Borough leadership to discuss a long-term lease licensing agreement to take over Memorial Baseball Field. Now, we are continuing to investigate this. We're not quite sure the investment that would be required in order to, to, you know, just bring that property up to where it really needs to be. So we're going to do some further investigating and talk with our council just to see how this would work, what are the investments involved. We also talked about our capital projects, and we did approve in the previous meeting, we approved the capital projects for the 2019-2020 year. And every single year, we're going to continue to work with Dewey Engineering to take a look at what we have as far as projects and how we're going to prioritize those projects. And Boucher and James, as the engineer of record, has already utilized for primary civil engineering work. And it is recommended that the board approve a five-year agreement with Dewey Engineering, giving the administration the authority to utilize them for management of capital projects. Okay. We also have a, our cleaning services through SSC. The contract is expiring at the conclusion of this school year. And the administration sent out, I believe Zach sent out, a survey to the principals to get an idea of any feedback that they had for how things are going working with that particular services company. And overwhelmingly, it seemed, for the, for the most part, it seemed as though everyone was either satisfied or highly satisfied or neutral, essentially. And so is largely positive with one outlier, which we are addressing separately. There was, there was a company that contacted the school district. They're a renewable company, and they were interested in leasing 20, approximately 20 acres of our land located at West Pumping Station Road. And they were wanting to pay us a $30,000 revenue per year, stipend per year, to utilize that land for solar, for solar, a solar farm, essentially. And we are still, we're still looking at it. I think that the committee kind of concluded the amount was not sufficient for the restrictions that could be potential for, for a project like that. For instance, it could create a restriction on potential options for developments in the future. So we are still entertaining it. However, it seems like the committee was not, you know, super excited or thought that amount was sufficient. And Dave Akman, who wants to actually recommend it, and I thought it was a good idea, how can we get our tech school folks involved in a project like this? And maybe it's something we could, we could do ourselves. We went over where we are with the Nightig renovation project. Everything is still on track, which is great. No issues. And we are applying, the district is, one of the goals that we had for this year was to complete an application for the PSBO Facilities of Excellence Award. And the goal is not necessarily to achieve the award, but rather serve as a self-audit for continuous improvement, gives us an opportunity to deep dive into our facilities. So it's a great opportunity regardless of if we win or not. And the last item, we talked about how at Nightig, or really it's Towickin Valley currently, that we do have some folks coming in to replace some of the carpet. And as you know, we have our Nightig students there currently. However, those folks are, they have to run that by us, and that's a, that's a work in progress. Because as you all know, Faith Christian is going to be taking over that building after we, after we move. And that concludes my report. Anyone else have anything to add? All right. Next, we will go over to Ms. Weed, Mrs. Weed, the policy committee report.
We had a committee meeting last, well, I guess, the Thursday before Thanksgiving on November 21st. And there were a lot of people present for a policy committee meeting. All the committee meeting members were there, as long as Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Jackson and some newly, the newly elected board members, Mr. Spear and Mr. Reimers. Am I saying your name right, by the way? Is it Reimers? Okay. Thank you. And several on the administration were there. And the main thing we discussed at the meeting on the 21st were two items related to the adoption of the policy 617 that was adopted at the previous board meeting. There's a lot of misinformation, and as has been addressed by some of the comments here, about that policy. And we circulated a one-page fact sheet on the lunch debt issue, which was distributed to everyone in attendance. And I don't know, Gary, is that available on our website? Yeah. If anyone cares to look at it, I thought it was posted there. And then Mr. Shock explained the information in that fact sheet in order to kind of correct some of the misinformation that's been going around, around the community about the intention and the meaning of policy 617. Sorry, I've got something in my throat here. So basically, the idea behind the policy is that the board is certainly open to hearing any ideas, but do not believe that taxpayers should subsidize lunches for people who couldn't afford to pay. When you read the policy, it does not impact any students who qualify for free or reduced lunches, for any families that are having problems paying for lunch. There is a very open procedure to go to the administration and apply for free and reduced luncheons. And I wanted to just emphasize some of the specific points that were made at this, this meeting. If parents cannot afford to pay for their children's lunch, assistance is provided, as I just mentioned, in the free reduced lunch food program. And we encourage people that cannot afford to pay to do that. And then, as Mr. Jackson emphasized earlier, at no time is a child denied food. That is definitely misinformation that's out there. Under the law, we are required to provide food, and we do. And there will be no practical impact on the elementary or middle school level in terms of student consequences. And for debts of $100 or less, principals have discretion. And no consequence will ever involve access to a curricular experience trip or activity that's related, educational related. And parents have ample time, 60 days, to pay the debt, or where there's a hardship to work out some type of arrangement, such as a payment plan, prior to any student consequence is being considered. And then restrictions at the high school level on purchasing prom tickets or walking in the graduation ceremony, those aren't new. They've always been in effect. And I gave an example, just personally, with my daughter, who was a varsity athlete in the high school, and lost her soccer uniform. And we had to replace it and pay the school district for that uniform that she had lost before she could go to junior prom. So I can tell you personally that that is not new. And most importantly, the administrative regulation that was prepared, it affirms the board's intent that the policy be implemented with understanding, compassion, and sensitivity to each student's personal situation and/or a family hardship. And there were two recommendations made that are posted on board docs with policy 808 on food, food service to align it with policy 617. The clarification for lunch debt as per, I guess these are state PD requirements, Mr. Shock, as far as transferring money, right, as I read this policy. And then also to address possible donations from the community, whoever wants to donate for lunch debt. And then AR 115 is being reviewed to set procedures that reflect the intent of the policy. We had policies up for recommended reading for first reading. Policy 808 is on the board agenda for the first reading and available to review. And then I think the administration will implement policy 617 and policy 115 in accordance with the ARs as presented. And then there is a policy on the second reading for approval tonight, which is policy 123, and that is involving interscholastic athletics. That just has to do with insurance, as I recall was said.
Correct. We changed some of the language on the insurance. Yeah. And again, that's posted. And I believe that was it. That was at our last policy meeting, unless anyone else has anything else.
Nope. All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Weed. Now, on to Mr. Jackson, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit report.
For the sake of the new board members who may not know, the intermediate unit is a county agency that primarily is known for its work in special education, provides a lot of the special education programs in our district, but that is not exclusive to what it does. I am the board rep to the IU. I go once a month. The policies and procedures we pass are, the contracts we engage with various entities are included in your board docs on the agenda. You can summarize those, see what we do. And I also always include what's called the awesome news, which is just a summary of all the various programs the IU is involved with above and beyond special education. So please take time to go through those. That is my report on the IU.
Go on with the legislative report.
Legislative report. I also include every month the legislative report. This is something I get from the IU legislative liaison, who provides all this information about what's happening in Harrisburg. For those in the public, this is always put on the public part, so you can see as well what type of legislation is contemplated and passed in Harrisburg. I'm not going to get detailed into any of these specifically. There's a number that, if you're interested, you can look through, talk to your representatives. There's nothing I think is necessary to highlight right now. I will talk, I will... I will talk, I will address Mr. Reimers. I know you're curious about PSBA information. The IU works a lot with the PSBA as well, and hosts a lot of their functions. At the end of the last page, you can see the Advocacy Committee for Education has two meetings in the early part of the next year. Throw those on your calendar if you want to stop by and join those. That is my Legislative Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And next is our Goals Committee, Mr. Kern.
I want to say that we didn't meet this past period, because I remember reporting the time before, so.
I was thinking that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Nice to know you didn't miss it.
Excellent, excellent. I did miss the one, so that's why. Anyway. Okay, next is the Upper Bucks County Technical School Report, Mr. Akmanowicz.
The last Upper Bucks County Technical School meeting was on November 21st. We acknowledged Student of the Month, Luke Orberg, of Pen Ridge School District. The school's food truck was recently featured on the front page of the Lehigh Valley Business Journal. Thank you, Dr. Hartner, for passing that along. Association Builders and Contractors awarded over $22,000 in scholarships to Upper Bucks County Technical Students. Three students received two-year scholarships to the ABC Apprenticeship Program. I think that's very notable. We received a new $1,000 sponsor for the food truck, which is awesome. Thank you, Educational Solutions Enterprises. Special thanks to Schlosser Steel, Cotner Trailers, Michael Hefner, and Wurling, I always, I can't pronounce, Wurlings Lumber, the one on 611.
Wearing's.
Wearing's, thank you. Lumber and Home Center for substantial contributions to our organization as well this month. We handled some routine business, we approved some bills, some hiring. We got to hear from our representative, who was seeking permission to film part of an independent film in a room within the school. We did the first reading of a change for policy 616 for the payment of bills. There was also discussion about the possibility of a potential emergency management program, which would focus for EMTs and fire science, possibly starting off in night classes, and hopefully to open up for the students. Our next meeting is set for December 19th. It will be our reorganizational meeting. That concludes my report.
Mr. Akmanowicz, if I may.
Oh, of course.
Two things I want to make sure everybody's aware of. I believe the food truck's actually going to be at the tree lighting ceremony Friday night.
Thank you. Yes, it is.
And as well, the tech school's having breakfast with Santa Saturday morning.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. This guy's going to write my reports from now on. Yes, two very important things that I left out. So, please come to the tech school on Saturday morning and join us for breakfast.
All right. Thank you all.
Enjoy some soup on Friday night at the tree lighting.
Awesome. Thank you both.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the EMS fire science? Is it just in conversation?
It was just basically in a brief conversation. I'll gladly share with you the few slides that were made available to me, and, you know, off, off-mic, if that's okay with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It was literally just a small dialogue conversation, was probably no more than two, two and a half minutes. They're hoping for most of it to be funded with grants.
Yeah, I think Middle Bucks, for example, has a program for firefighters and things like that. So, maybe they're trying to do something similar.
I think the EMS program would be great to suggest to LVHN. Don't you, Keith? Just throwing it out there.
I like the ideas.
Everybody's looking for people, so it's a very...
It's important, right? Yeah.
Open fires, something like that.
Awesome. All right, next item of business. Well, first, we're going to be talking about our fiscal items, but I'd like to allow anyone who wants to come up for public comment to speak regarding our fiscal items presented for a vote. Okay, I need a motion to approve the Boucher &amp; James bill list for November as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, next item is to approve the November 2019 bills list as presented. I need a motion for that.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Also, approve the Treasurer's Report for October 2019. And now I need a motion to approve those, or to vote for those.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam President, just one little reminder to offer discussion of each one before the vote.
Oh, I did it again. Thank you. Keep on me, keep on me.
She just doesn't want us to talk.
No, that's definitely not it. Keep on me, guys. Okay. Next item is our Human Resources Consent Agenda. Is there anyone who wants to make a public comment? Okay. All right. We are voting on professional staff, supervisory and technology staff, support staff, and unit pay. Going to get a motion to vote on the Human Resources Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Dave.
Just that I see Diane Kressman is retiring, and I thought she was a good long-term employee, and be sorry to see her go.
Have fun in retirement. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is our Policy and Programs Consent Agenda. Any public comment for the Policy and Programs items presented for a vote? Okay, we have the approval of Policy Committee Recommendations. That's Policy 123, Interscholastic Athletics. And approval for the contract between Dotcom Therapy, Inc., and Quakertown Community School District. I have a motion to approve those items.
Second.
Discussion?
For the sake of clarity and for the public, could someone please describe for us what the Dotcom arrangement is?
That was in the year 2000.
Thank you.
Sure, that's for students who require mental health services or psychological counseling at a level that we can't provide, and it's cheaper for us to provide it in ways that they're used to communicating, which is either electronically, through FaceTime, or texting.
Thank you.
Awesome. That's great. I think technology's starting to move that, you know, further and further, that type of communication, so that's wonderful, if you like that kind of thing. Okay, we had a, we had a first and second, or no? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we're on to our information items. And this is going to be for the interest of the public, as well as Board members. There is a new school calendar that is up for 2020 and 2021. The school start times, committee meeting minutes, that's an ongoing committee that, if you're interested in that particular topic, you can go in and see their minutes. Also, Policy Committee 617 AR, Student Financial Obligations, is listed, as well as the 617, I'm sorry, as well as the 115 Vocational Education Draft. For the Board members and executive content, you can see the suspension report. And then, there is a November 2019 Student Activities Report available as well.
I want to apologize real quick to the Board, because I mistook, mistook the school board meeting calendar with the school calendar earlier in the meeting. And I want to reiterate for the new Board members that if you look at the school calendar for next year, down at the bottom, it explains when the school year starts. There's a clear rationale for when school starts every year that's defined in, at the bottom of that calendar. So, people may, well, why are we starting school on this day? Well, it's, it's explained at the bottom of that calendar there.
No, is this just a proposal? This will be voted on at a different time?
Yes, please.
Yes, this is a draft. The way that the process works, for the benefit of people that haven't been through it before, one of our primary objectives in designing the school calendar is to align our calendar with Pen Ridge and Palisades. The technical school is open when any two of the three districts are open. So, if our calendars don't align, then our students miss out on, on a lot of their shop time. So, I meet with the Assistant Superintendents from the other two districts. We put together a draft that conforms to all of our collective bargaining agreements, because we all have different language, and different holidays, and different, different things like that. So, this is the draft that resulted from that work. I shared a copy with QCEA, because that's our practice, and I'll be chatting with Ryan if there's any minor changes that don't affect the student days. So, there may be a couple minor changes, but it would come back to you in January to vote on. Okay?
Thank you for that explanation.
A little side note to the new Board members. If you look at the calendar, you'll see that Quakertown has off both election days, in May and in November every year. We would love to change that policy. We've been down that road, we've been shot down. Pen Ridge has no school buildings used for elections, so they do not close. Palisades has so few kids in their district really anymore, they've got room in the buildings to hold elections when they need to. We don't have that luxury, so we close schools. So, if any of the new Board members wish to take on this mission, and try and convince the county supervisor, or county commissioners, which have changed, apparently, you're welcome to take up that mantle and see where you go with it.
Give it some thought.
I actually know one of the plans is to move the, or possibility of moving the polling place out of Nightig after it reopens, and leave it at the, what's the name of that church on?
The Lutheran Church, I'm not sure what the name, Trinity Lutheran is, actually.
They were talking about that when they moved it, as far as an option to keep it there.
We approached Trinity Lutheran to host this in the past, they have refused. If, if, suddenly they've changed their mind, it's a change of mind, so.
Well, the people that were telling me that were from Doylestown, so I don't know what Trinity Lutheran said to them. You and I both know that there were some issues with that location that we talked about, but, you know, we'll see. As far as May comes, obviously, they won't be able to get back into Nightig at that point, so.
Okay, great. Any new business? All right, last opportunity for general public comment.
I just want to, I preferred to have spoken later after the 115 AR was discussed, but I just want to plead with the policy member and the Board members to please reconsider this AR and allow for the homeschool supervisor to have input on the grade-level assignments for these homeschool children. The way it's, it's assigned now is based, it's ludicrous, that the school administration should just arbitrarily assign a grade, not knowing any of the history of the child or the student. And I just plead that you please reconsider this before these procedures are put into place, so this does not happen to another child like it happened to mine. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Del Rossi. Any other public comment? At this time, I'm going to allow our counsel, Jeff, to describe our next step here. We are going to be going into executive session.
Board will be recessing for a few moments to discuss some litigation-related tax assessment appeals. They will be returning and perhaps taking action and adjourning after the executive session, so the meeting is not as yet concluded.
So, we get a second break?
Yeah, we're breaking.
Or they get a second break?
Do we need a motion for that, or do we just?
Just recess.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Can I still motion for more breaks through the year?
Just saying, after the executive session.